Start.
Exactly.
Okay, there we go.
Welcome, everyone. If you're just now joining us, we'll go ahead and get started with the hearing in just a few minutes. As people start filtering into the public room where you can view the presentation. We'll get started here shortly. Good afternoon, everyone. If you're just joining us, we'll get started in just another minute or two. Waiting for a few more people to to show up and then we'll kick it off.
Yeah, Nick, it looks like we're we're starting to slow down. So let's give one more minute and then we'll let's go and get started. All right, I think we can go and get started. Welcome, everyone. My name is Eric Havig. I'm the statewide policy and planning manager for the Oregon Department of Transportation. I lead the development of our statewide policy plans from the Oregon Transportation Plan, Highway Plan, Bike Pet, et cetera, et cetera. And also lead the the long range planning program for the state of Oregon. We're going to do a quick round of introductions of the staff who are going to be running our public hearing today. We have a number of folks. This is a big effort to put on with the number of interested individuals and citizens who want to provide us comment today on the draft amendments around tolling. So we'll do quick introductions. We'll kind of walk through what the process will be. We'll jump into a very short presentation. Just remind folks what what we're here for today and what we'll be doing. And then we'll officially open up the public hearing and begin taking testimony. With that, let's go and introduce the staff who'll be running the show today. Roseanne.
Thank you, Eric. My name is Roseanne O'Laughlin. I'm a principal planner for the statewide planning unit at ODOT. I am the presiding officer of the public hearing today. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, to help us, we have a number of staff from WSP who are consultants to to this work and they're going to be helping us today as well. So Scott, let's start with you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Scott Kyler, and I'm here to help facilitate to make sure that we get around to as many folks as we can to get your good comments today. Thank you.
And Nick.
Hi, everyone. I am Nick Fazio, also with WSP, and I will be your Zoom host today. I'm going to be the one sort of behind the scenes, giving you permission to speak and not speak and sort of managing the raised hand function. So we'll learn more about that as we get there. But we would like you to use the question and answer function if you are able to and having any technical difficulties. That would be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. And Nick will also help you if you're having issues and help troubleshoot. He's going to be our technical guru and and extra smart person for this process. So thank you, Nick. Rachel.
Hi, everyone. I'm Rachel Havelow with WST. I will be running the PowerPoint and the timekeeping during the public hearing.
Thanks, Rachel. Let's go to Libby.
Yes. Hello, everyone. How are you? I am Libby Kennedy. I'm with WSP and I'm taking some notes today during our public hearing, summarizing thoughts and making sure that we keep good track of of everyone's comments.
Thanks, Libby. And Alec.
Hi, everyone. This is Alec Agarola, also with WSP. I'll be doing the same as Libby, taking notes as we go along through the presentation and the hearing. Thank you.
Thanks, Alec. And then also, we do have the Policy and Development Administrator for the Oregon Department of Transportation, Amanda Peets is here. She's not going to have an official role, but she's actively going to be listening as best she can throughout this. So Amanda, I don't know if you just wanted to introduce yourself real quick and say hi.
Sure. Thank you, Eric. As Eric said, my name is Amanda Peets, and I'm the Administrator for Policy Data and Analysis and really look forward to hosting this public comment session and really getting your perspectives. Our role here is to listen to you. And we'll use that information to revise and refine the policies. So thank you for your time here today, too.
Thanks, Amanda. So again, we're going to jump into this here very soon, but just again, for today, the purpose of this is to hold a public hearing on the draft amendments to the Oregon Highway Plan regarding tolling. So just one, a couple of quick comments on that before we we jump into what some of those changes look like. Just a reminder, the Oregon Highway Plan, the current version, already has policies around tolling within it. So this is not really proposing anything brand new. We've already had tolling policies for the state for a number of years. What we're really talking about is refreshing those, updating those, modernizing those policies and directions to reflect the information we've learned and acquired over the last number of years as we've been talking and thinking and studying potential implementation of tolling applications. So we'll do a quick overview again of what's in the rules and kind of what the process will be. Then we'll jump right into the verbal public comment period. And what we'll talk about that looks like at the end, we will wrap up with what the next steps. Next slide, please. So just a few tips. This hearing is being recorded. The recording will be made available if if anybody asks for that. Again, Nick just talked about this, that the chats are disabled, video is disabled. And everybody is muted. When it becomes your turn, you're going to be giving a heads up to folks, kind of what the order of the next speakers will be. You'll receive a prompt from Nick and he'll help kind of walk you through what that process looks like. If for any reason you're having technical issues, again, use the Q and A function. Or you have the the caller text number down at the bottom to help work through those. Hopefully, we won't have any hiccups, but you know, technology, there's always an issue. If for some reason your turn is up for speaking and we can't get your microphone working or it's not just functioning, what we'll do is we'll just move on to the next person. Nick and the team will work with you behind the scenes and we'll get you right back in the queue as fast as possible. Next slide, please. We asked for folks to pre-register. We found this is a really good way for us to help organize and structure the public comment. So we have a list of folks that have really signed up early to speak and provide their public comments to us. We're going to go right down through that list. And again, we'll be letting folks know it when you're kind of coming up, if you're in the next three or four folks that might be coming up. When you get your opportunity, we're going to ask you to get accept the the speaker role. Make sure your microphone is working. We'll ask you to introduce yourself and then you'll have three minutes to provide your public comment. There will be a timer to help you kind of track your time and monitor. We have a lot of people signed up. So it's we do need to keep things moving. Just another couple of tips. It's okay to keep the comments short. If you you want to hit a specific point, it's already been raised. You you can say, you know, you support that that perspective as well, and then maybe hit another point that has not been brought up. You want to make sure it gets highlighted. So we'll be jumping into that very soon. Next slide, please. So an overview of what the Oregon Highway Plan is. So the Oregon Highway Plan is a mode plan for highway systems for movement of cars and trucks. But also how those walking system and transit systems that use the highways also use those facilities. And it fits under the umbrella of the Oregon Transportation Plan. The Oregon Highway Plan sets the vision for the highway system. It reflects the priorities and general direction of the Oregon Transportation Plan and Oregon Transportation Commission. And what it really does is it guides decisions about investment and management, operation, and system operations of the state highway system, but also the overall Oregon transportation roadway and highway network. The last Oregon Highway Plan was fully amended and redone back in 1999, so it's getting a little long. We're actually in a process to update both the Oregon Transportation Plan and Oregon Highway Plans in a full update, but that's being run on a separate timeframe schedule. And as I mentioned, tolling policies are not new to the Oregon Highway Plan. We've had those in the existing Oregon Highway Plan. They were adopted in 2012, so we are 10 years in to having policies around tolling within the Oregon Highway Plan. Next slide, please. So the purpose of this amendment, I hit this a little bit. It's really to modernize and update the language that we have around tolling. And specifically, we're also now bringing in the term pricing and roadway pricing specifically around congestion pricing right now. We understand there's other pricing things, but right now it's really focused on congestion pricing. So we need to define all those different terms and what they mean. So we have a common framework. We need to be adding more clarity around the goals and the outcomes that we want to achieve when we're talking about pricing the system or implementing a toll. At the same time, there's other key goals and objectives. We want to make sure the relationship between those goals and objectives to tolling and pricing. So how does equity get considered? How do we make sure climate goals and objectives, safety, funding the transportation system, all those are important. Again, but being very clear in the policy work that when we're talking about pricing and tolling, what is the specific outcome we want to have, but how these other factors help inform those different choices? And then finally, we really add some information that talks about guidance on what do we need to think about or where the money can be used, how to set the rates, understanding what is impacted by potentially application of a pricing or tolling system? And understanding then what those benefits will be and where those revenues can go. Next slide. What we don't get into. This policy does not get into how we set the rates or actual rate setting that is done at the project level. The policy is there to set the framework and the sideboards and the goalposts to help inform the conversation, not to make those final decisions. The policy also is not here to say you must toll or ODOT must toll or the state of Oregon must implement tolling or pricing. It's to set up a framework of where does that make sense? Where should you study it? Where should you consider it? But you still have to go through a process to actually implementation, implement such a thing. The policy does not say we have to implement this in any specific location. Another part that I really want to hit this is a statewide policy, even though right now we're focused on studying application really in the Portland metro area. This is a policy, the Oregon Highway Plan for the entire state of Oregon. So we want to make sure we're setting this up for a broader conversation. And then finally, what is not addressed is the other types of pricing. So we know there's a lot of other tools around pricing the system and pricing users of the system. We're not getting into those with this particular Oregon Highway Plan update. Those bigger conversations are going to occur, as I mentioned, back in the larger Oregon Transportation Plan in that larger Oregon Highway Plan policy updates that 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 are ongoing right now. And I encourage you, if you're interested in a transportation advocate, definitely follow along with the Oregon Transportation Plan work and the website there. Next slide. So our schedule, we've released the the draft policy late this spring, which began our public review over this summer. And then we anticipate going to the Oregon Transportation Commission after we've completed the public review period, public comment period, and made any additional changes and modifications to the Transportation Commission for adoption. One of the things I really want to highlight on this schedule is our original due date for public comment was August 1st of this year. We've already received a lot of feedback, a lot of comments from interested parties and groups who are reviewing this policy, asking for more time. So I want to just announce formally and officially that ODOT is going to extend the public review period and public comment time for these draft policies by an additional 45 days. So that will take us out into the middle part of September. This is going to provide the public nearly 100 days of time for review and comment on the the draft policy amendments to the through the OHP. We're going to make sure that that is publicized on the website. Any moment, I think there's a press release going out almost any moment to announce that. So hopefully, that will give anybody who's really interested in this policy a little bit more time to understand it and provide written comments beyond today. With that, I want to also remind folks, this is not the only way to provide public comment. This is just one of those tools in our toolbox. We're required by state law to hold a public hearing. But you can still submit things through the online form, through letters, or through emails through the Oregon Highway Plan Manager inbox. So next slide, please. All right. So I think that really sets the stage for where we're at and getting ready to open this up for the public hearing. So I'm going to turn it back over. I don't know if this goes to Roseanne next or Scott. Roseanne, is this you?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it to Roseanne, and she's going to start setting the stage and then Scott will will walk us through any of the final kind of things we need to do to get everybody ready. And we will officially open the public hearing. But thank you very much for your time and really appreciate everybody taking the interest in this policy work. Roseanne.
Thank you, Eric. So good afternoon, everyone. Again, my name is Roseanne O'Laughlin. I'm a principal planner in the Department Oregon Department of Transportation. Today, I am the presiding officer for today's hearing, and this is for the matter of the Oregon Highway Plan Policy Amendment. For the record, it is July 20, 2022, and it is approximately 1:15 PM. Also present at this at this hearing, again, representing the Oregon Department of Transportation, is Eric Havig from the statewide planning unit. So on the screen, you will find instructions for each statement when after this after this statement. Each participant will be given a maximum of three minutes to make a statement on the record. So be please be prepared when it is your turn. The order of the hearing today is as follows. I'll read a short notice into the record and provide a summary of the meeting purpose and background. Then we will take testimony for the record, and we have a few ground rules. We will proceed one at a time through the list of participants in the order of the signups were received. As noted previously, if you did not previously sign up, but would like to make a comment on the record, please add your name and your phone number if you dialed in into the chat box or your name, just for the record, so that we can call on you and our staff will work with you to get you on the list. You again have three minutes to make your statement, and we will start the clock once you start your statement. Please speak clearly and state your name. When it is your turn to comment, you will be unmuted, and a timer is visible on the screen for speakers. If you are dialed in by phone and providing testimony, we may announce by phone number, and we also may let let you know that you have a limited time remaining if you approach the three minutes. Note, this meeting is being recorded, and a summary of each comment will be provided to the Oregon Transportation Commission. We ask that those who make a statement not repeat comments of previous witnesses, but simply state on the record that they support a previous witness's comments. Please keep comments to the topic of the Oregon Highway Plan Policy Amendment. During the hearing, if questions arise, ODOT will make clarifying statements. However, this hearing is simply to take comments for the record. The technology team will call the names of those who have signed up to comment on the draft plan. So thank you for your cooperation and participation, and now I will read the notice. So notice of today's hearing was provided to stakeholders in an announcement dated June 13, 2022. Today's hearing is being held by phone and internet. The last date for public comment is September 15, 2022. Comments submitted after this hearing should be sent through the project website with the comment form. The purpose of today's hearing is to receive oral comments on the Oregon Highway Plan Amendment. The Department of Transportation is not making decisions at this hearing. Final decisions on the draft highway Oregon Highway Plan Amendment will be made following the close of the public comment period. So we'll begin now by taking oral comments by calling the first person listed, and I'm going to hand that off to our technology team to itemize that list. When your name is called, we will unmute your phone and announce when you begin speaking. You may need to accept requests to speak at the time. Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Nick and the technology team to list the names and get the oral comments started. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Roseanne and Eric. I've got Nick here to help answer any technical questions you might have. I'll just remind you that there is a raised hand function at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And once we get through the initial registered presenters that will take their their three minutes to speak to the policy, then we can go ahead and all use the raised hand function. For now, I'm going to read the first names three at a time, just to make sure we're identifying you and taking you off mute. And we won't start that clock again until you start speaking. If you three could use that raised hand function, starting with Dr. Carmen Thompson, David Farmer, and Lauren E. Mank. So Nick, if you have any further instructions, go ahead. And then if you can take a Dr. Thompson off mute, we will start the clock.
Thanks, Scott. And once again, Dr. Carmen Thompson, David Farmer, Lauren E. Monk, if you're in the virtual room, please raise your virtual hand. And I'm not seeing them, Scott, so they may not be here yet. Why don't we move on to the next three speakers?
Give it just one moment. The next three in the queue will be Dr. Dave White, Clint Marinaka, and Marvin Hadley. So if we if we get six hands in the air, that's great. But if you could use the raised hand function for the next three, we just want to make sure we identify and bring the right participants off of mute.
And I'll just add at this point, I know there's a couple of people that have called in by phone to raise your virtual hand by phone. You can do that by dialing star nine. So Dr. Dave White, Clint Marinaka, and Marvin Hadley, if you're in the virtual room, or if you dialed in by phone, please raise your virtual hand and we'll take your comment. All right, Scott, I think we can move on to the next three.
Thanks, Nick. The next three include Ruth Rava, Mary Rigert, and Ridge Taylor. You're welcome to raise your hand and we can get you off mute to speak. And if you have any technical comments or questions or problems, you can go to the Q and A function. Also, at the lower portion of your screen, you'll move your cursor down there to find these functions.
All right, calling for Ruth Rava, Mary Rigert, and Rich Taylor. If you're in the virtual room, please raise your hand now so we can take your comment. And if not, Scott, maybe we can go to the next ones.
You bet. Just a quick pause, Nick. We've been through three sets, nine names. Any technical issues showing up at your end? We just need to get to somebody in the room. I'll read the next three while you check that, Nick. We've got Dwight Brown, Irene Gilbert, and Bob Grover signed up to speak. Dwight Brown, Irene Gilbert, and Bob Grover. If you could raise your virtual hand, we will take off mute to give you a three minute comment. Nick, just checking back in with you.
Yeah. Dwight Brown, Irene Gilbert, and Bob Grover. If you're in the virtual room, go ahead and raise your virtual hand. I will take this moment to also just let everybody in the virtual room know. There's a few of you that have raised your virtual hands already. We've not gotten to your names yet on the pre-registered signup list. But after we get through the signup list, we will go ahead and start with people that are in the virtual room in attendance today. So Scott, I think we can move on with the next three commenters. And at this rate, we might get to attendees in the room that haven't signed up yet rather quickly.
Well, let's go to the next three. Paul Edgar, Steve Riley, and David Lewin. If you are here and could raise your virtual hand, we'll we'll get your three minute comments and starting with Paul. Steve Riley. Or David Lewin. While we're waiting for that group, the next three are George Dur, Stephen Schweitzer, and Joanna Garten. If you could raise your virtual hands, if you're here in the room.
All right. George Dur, are you in the room? If so, please raise your hand. If not, I think we can go to Steve. Steve Schweitzer, I know Steve's in the room. So Steve, I'm going to go ahead and give you permission to unmute yourself. You'll see a notification on your side. Just accept that. And then we'll go ahead and start the timer. If you could repeat your name for us, that would be great. Go ahead, Steve.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Perfect. Good afternoon. My name is Steve Schweitzer. I am a director on the Board of Charbonneau Homeowners Association. Charbonneau is a part of Wilsonville with 95% of the homes built from 1972 to 1996. We rely on the Boone Bridge as an integral part of our connection to the core of our city. My 3,000 neighbors and I use the bridge to travel to the grocery store, gas station, public services, post office, doctor's office, or to visit grandchildren. Some like me make four to five round trips to town per week. Who lives in Charbonneau? Charbonneau is made up of 13 HOAs ranging from single family homes to apartments, an assisted living facility, and according to the last census figures, a median age is 60, but over a third or over 65. About a third also have incomes under $50,000. Although we have not had a formal poll, I can assure you that the overwhelming majority do not support tolling in general, let alone making us bear an unfair burden by placing a toll station at the Boone Bridge. I know of no other neighborhood in the Portland metro area that would be faced with a toll just to go to the library, church, park, or a city council meeting. Let's look at our alternatives to to using the bridge and go to the grocery store. We'd have to drive Newbert 30 miles round trip or can be 16 miles round trip. Neither of these alternatives is practical nor meets the desire to reduce carbon emissions. Contrary to the ODOT and Metro goals, VMT will actually increase. That said, there has been, has there been any analysis or study in in placing the gateway three miles north between Alexon and the two oh five interchange? This certainly seems more practical, more equitable, and a lot more manageable. However, since you have given us the opportunity to address the board, we extend our invitation to you or staff to come to our community and address our residents correctly. I can assure an adequate turnout, and they would be more than willing to listen to your reasoning and explanations why the toll bridge or gateway has to be at the bridge. Thank you.
And thank you, Steve. We appreciate your comments very much. Rowan at Garden. Are you available to speak? And could you raise your virtual hand? The next three, we're waiting to see if Rowan is in the room, are Tracy Marx, David Marx, and Paul Ashton. And we'd like you to also raise your virtual hands. We'll move on to Dustin Gamble. Melody Webb and Glenn Musack. Again, the reason for the virtual hands is so that we can get you off of mute and hear your comments on the OHP policy regarding tolling. Going to call the next three, Dustin, Gamble, Melody Webb, and Glenn Musack again. Followed by Tim Toth, Jeremy Riddle, and Linda Nice. Are you available? Could you please raise your hands? About halfway through the list there, Nick, are you seeing anything that I'm not? Should we move on?
Yeah, I think let's move on.
Okay, and the next three invited to speak, Chris Appes, Michael Hill, Kareem Patton. Please raise your virtual hand. Please.
I do see Chris has raised their hand. So Chris, I don't see your last name, but I assume you may be Chris Apps. So we'll go ahead and unmute you so you can give your comment. You'll see a notification on your side. Just accept the permission, and then you can go ahead and start.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I, in my opinion, toll roads are just, I mean, look at Indiana and Washington. I mean, in Indiana right now, a German corporation owns the rights to the toll roads. I mean, the money that the US citizens are paying in Indiana is going to a German company. In Washington, they're going to an Australian company. It it makes no sense for tolling roads. Not to mention the overburden on what you're going to do to the sound, to the side streets. I mean, it is ridiculous. The fact that you guys are talking about tolling I five and two oh five. I mean, all the way from the Washington border to Wilsonville. I mean, just think about the lawsuits that are coming down the pipeline. The money you guys are going to have to fight. You you got to figure it's probably going to hurt home values anywhere between three and seven percent when there is a nice quiet neighborhood, and now you're going to have nonstop traffic from, you know, eight AM to eight PM. You're you're talking at least two or three billion dollars in lawsuits you guys are going to have to fight. It just makes no sense to me how anybody can think, especially with the recession, inflation and everything. I mean, I live day to day, and I make a trip into Portland at least twice a day. And and you're talking to me now I have to sit in traffic or have to pay twenty dollars each way. It's ridiculous. And and just be ready for a fight, guys. And to all the ODOT people that had to go around and clean up the homeless encampments, thank you, and I can't believe that that fell on you guys. Thank you for your time and have a great day.
Chris, thank you so much for for sharing and giving your comments today. So moving on, we have Michael Hill and Kareem Patton. If you could raise your hands. Okay, next, Thomas Kruger, followed by John Ramirez and Stuart Lebowitz. Join you, invite you to join in and give comments. Please raise your hands. And the next, yes.
We have an individual who's called in by phone, so we can't see their name. But it's a phone number ending in nine, eight, one, nine. So caller with phone number ending in nine, eight, one, nine, I'm going to go ahead and give you permission to talk. You should be able to unmute yourself. If you're on a smartphone, just use your unmute button or press star six, and you'll be able to accept that. Go ahead, caller ending in nine, eight, one.
This is Stuart Lebowitz. I'm with the Douglas County Global Women Coalition out of Roseburg. And even though we're in Southern Oregon, one thing we have learned is what happens in Portland does not stay in Portland. So we have a strong vested interest in the determination of ODOT in regards to tolling. We have strong and deep concerns about the whole concept. It is imperative that any decision made must be seen through a climate lens. Unfortunately, if ODOT views this tolling mechanism as a cash cow for highway expansion, it defeats the very idea of dealing with climate. And in addition, there is the law of unintended consequences as the previous caller outlined. Grounding neighborhoods will be significantly impacted. And and in essence, by creating traffic jams in side streets, you actually may increase greenhouse gas emissions. Finally, there is the issue of equity. The impact of tolling will necessarily fall on the backs and shoulders of those who can least afford it. And unless there are some strong and specific steps taken to ameliorate and alleviate that burden, which could prove both problematic and very time-consuming. This is another impact that needs to be weighed. So for all of those reasons, I would also urge you that if you do decide to move forward, and I hope you don't, that you do this as a pilot project for a limited period of time, three or six months, to see if it indeed alters traffic patterns in a way that is conducive to reducing the impact on on climate and does not have deleterious effects on low-income people as well as people who are in the surrounding areas. For allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your comments, perspective, Stuart. We're next preparing to hear from Tara O'Brien. I understand Tara is present and followed by Isaac Buckley and Robert Sung. If you could raise your virtual hands, and we'll we'll start with Tara.
Hi Tara, I'm going to go ahead and give you permission to speak and mute yourself whenever you're ready, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm muted. You can hear me?
Yes.
Yes, great. My name's Tara O'Brien. I am the Senior Government Affairs Coordinator with TriMet. And we're here to comment today on a few areas of this OHP amendment. And we'll be compiling more detailed comments as well. We've been supportive of congestion pricing as a tool to manage travel demand and help meet our state and regions' climate equity and safety goals. But we and we also acknowledge the need for revenue as part of congestion pricing. But we don't think this policy does enough to emphasize the transit and multimodal investment needs to effectively manage demand and reduce vehicle miles traveled. First, this policy should articulate a process for revenue needs to meet transit and multimodal capital improvements beyond what is identified as required mitigation through NIPA. Policy Ling, Policy six eleven, Action C, and the proposed policy that multi-transit and multimodal improvements should be increased is not enough and does not reflect the recommendations that have been articulated. We'll be proposing some specific language here. Second, we have some concerns about the definitions of corridor and diversion included in this amendment and think that these could negatively impact transit reliability and make it more challenging to make planned transit priority improvements on routes that people are likely to travel on to avoid paying a toll if traffic volumes off interstate highways increase. For instance, transit routes may not move people in the same general direction as told highways as noted in the proposed definition. So but do get people where they need to go, and we'll be proposing edits to Policy Action six point eight, six ten, and six twelve to ensure that transit, travel time, and reliability are not negatively impacted by how corridors and diversion are just defined, and additional flexibility is added to these definitions. Additionally, increased transit access as a performance measure for congestion pricing is one of the key performance measures we have advocated for throughout this process. And this OHP policy update needs to more clearly identify the ways in which transit improvements can be included as part of the capital project in order for this objective to be met. Policy six point five needs to more clearly identify the range of enhanced transit, access to transit, and investments that can be supported by toll revenue and funded in order to implement the balanced congestion pricing that we've supported. It must go farther than understanding how transit could be impacted, but to ensure transit improvements can move forward, and we will be proposing specific edits to that policy area as well. And we wanted to thank you for the extension of the public comment period. We think this is essential to give additional time in coordination with Metro's RTP policy language as well as the EMAC recommendations that were presented to TC last week, and we'll be following up with specific edits. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tara, and thanks for those specific recommendations that I'm sure ODOT will appreciate reviewing on that toll policy proposal. I have next up, I'm going to ask for, is John Ramirez back? We called earlier. And if if so, I think we can go ahead and have your comments next, followed by Isaac Buckley and Robert Sung. We got John doing the catch-up here.
And I see John Ramirez that you're in the virtual room, so I'm going to go ahead and give you permission to speak, John, if you want to go ahead.
Well, thank you, but actually I didn't have anything to say at this point, so appreciate it.
Very good. Well, then, thanks for checking in, John. So next on our list is Isaac Buckley. If you're available, we can get you off mute and take three minutes to hear your comments.
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, thank you very much for, first of all, for this, the opening of the conversation like this. Really appreciate when the public has the opportunity to add some perspective to the conversation. Um, just to touch again on what Stuart brought up about equity in particular, I'd like to emphasize that flat fees for the use of highways are inherently aggressive, disproportionately affecting poor motorists for whom every dollar counts and who are frequently forced to commute long distances to jobs in areas that can't afford to live. I understand that can be difficult for ODOT to secure sufficient funding for the upkeep of our highways, but tolls are not the answer. A substantially more effective way would be to lobby Oregonian lawmakers to close tax loopholes that wealthy citizens that wealthy citizens and corporations actually start paying their fair share for the use of our highways. And thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Okay, we're getting a number of responders in the room. Robert Sung, are you with us? We get you off mute and hear your comments, Robert.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is Robert Sung. I I don't know if this is too early to discuss the tolling payment platform, but I want to stress the importance of partnering with an existing platform such as Washington State's Good to Go or California's Fast Track. It it doesn't make sense for each state to have its own billing platform. As an example, if we look at the East Coast, the vast majority of the states use easy, use the EZ Pass platform. This makes it convenient to travel between states. Somebody traveling on the coastal states can travel all the toll roads from Maine all the way down to North Carolina, I believe, uninterrupted with the EZ Pass and not have to worry about how they're going to pay the tolls. This convenience reduces the pain of having to pay tolls. Having to juggle multiple state toll billing platforms increases the frustration of the user every time they have to log into multiple accounts to manage their their accounts. So again, I want to state the importance of making toll payment as convenient as possible for people traveling in the area, especially for travel on toll roads to and from our bordering states. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate your comments. The next three speakers, we have Dean Sir, Edward Thomas, and Jennifer Anthony. If you could raise your hands, and we will take your comments. Dean, have we got Dean queued up? Nick?
We can hear you, Dean. Maybe speak up just a little bit more.
Okay, thank you very much. I also want to thank you for extending the comment deadline and would reinforce what Robert Sung said about interactivity and compatibility of the tolling platform. We know that the state legislatures has set compatibility with Washington, but Washington is an outlier. EZ Pass is the US standard covering nineteen states, thirty-two million accounts, forty million, forty-nine million tags, and has collected over fifteen billion dollars in electronic toll revenues. California is not compatible with Washington, and to put Oregon in there and choose one or the other, that's not going to help the through-state traffic, and it will be through-state traffic on two oh five and I five. I would strongly encourage that this policy reflect the national standard map twenty-one passed in twenty twelve, which requires national compatibility. That will serve interstate trucking better and make Oregon a protagonist to get California and Washington compatible nationally as well. I believe there should also be a goal for setting the overhead for collecting tolls. That same number from fiscal year twenty eighteen, about fifteen billion dollars in total toll revenue, about thirty-three percent of that total revenue went to facility costs. I believe that's probably a lot of that is physical toll stations, which Oregon won't be using, but about sixteen percent, little over two billion, was dedicated to collection costs. I presume those are percentages paid to outside companies to manage tolls, and I think we should have a goal for that. Use of revenue. There's no mention of sunsetting tolls after capital projects are paid for or if the congestion goals are not met. I think there needs to be a policy in there that describes the use of revenue and how that revenue may cease at some time. Equity and affordability. Equity is the quality of being fair and impartial. Equity is a new, relatively new tolling goal. It should not be added without significant consideration and discussion. It is the topic of the day, and I do appreciate that, but we can't solve all of history's wrongs by what we're going to do going forward. We really need to look at this as equity and affordability, affordability being the key criteria. Congestion diversion in the absence of parallel alternative routes. I think the gentleman from Charbonneau mentioned this. They only have a river or there's a river that's in the way of them getting up into Wilsonville. We need to incorporate into this policy clarity with regard to how diversion is defined and what that really is. It gets to really small side streets here in the Portland metro area and certainly throughout the state because of the rivers. And then finally, I want to mention, and and again, with your time extension, I'm actually the author of IP for the Vote Before Tolls Initiative. It requires a regional vote before any new tolls in Oregon. It's a constitutional amendment retroactive to twenty eighteen. We will request our constituents to provide comments during this extended period. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Dean. Edward Thomas, followed by Jennifer Anthony. Edward, like to hear your comments next.
And I think, Scott, looking at the list, I I'm not sure those three speakers are in the room yet. So maybe we can jump down to Leo Groner.
Yes, I'll just mention, I'll just mention Jennifer Anthony and Bernard. A guy, if you are available, you will catch up to, then we'll A guy, if you are available, you will catch up to, then we'll move to Leo Groner, followed by Richard Larson. Thank you, Nick.
Go ahead, Leo. I've I've given you permission to unmute yourself.
Okay, my name is Leo Groner. I live in West Lynn. I'm a retiree. I am have really two concerns. One is congestion pricing. Basically during rush hours, access to the bridges almost impossible from West Lynn. During rush hours. On the other hand, as a retiree, I can take advantage of not rush hour times. If I know when the differential tolls will occur. Uh, my other point is is on diversion. There are essentially in the West Lynn, Oregon city area, two bridges. One is the bridge across to two oh five. And the other is the Seventh Street Bridge that goes into Oregon City. I believe that if there is a toll on two oh five, that will divert additional traffic to that tiny two lane. Bridge that crosses the Willamette into Oregon City. It's already a congestion mess. This will only make it far worse. Basically in West Lynn, we do need to. Uh, I have medical appointments in Happy Valley. I go into Gladstone in Milwaukee frequently. You know, otherwise we're in a little cul-de-sac on our side of the Willamette River. So those are my primary con- uh, concepts. I'd really like to know what's going to happen to that Seventh Street Bridge. Uh, it's already drastically overloaded and this will only make it far worse. That's my comment.
Thanks so much, Leo. I appreciate your comments. Next, we have Richard Larson, Tony Paulson, and Willie Huey. Is Richard available? I have three minutes to take your comments. Let's go. Um, let's move on to Tony Paulson, followed by Willie. Tony? Again, we'll try to circle back if folks show up late. We're moving through the list. Willie Huey. I'm going to call Roberto Bateroni. Roberto? Okay. So the next three speakers being called will be. Christine Lewis, Defoea Michelle, Clackamas County Board Commissioner, Tudy Smith. Christine?
Go ahead, Christine.
Thank you for providing this time for comment. My name is Christine Lewis. I serve on Metro Council and represent District Two. I live in the Willamette neighborhood in West Lynn here in Clackamas County. And I'm here today on behalf of Metro Council, which provides policy guidance for the Portland Metro Region's Metropolitan Planning Organization. We request that the public comment period on the Oregon Highway Plan tolling policy amendment be extended sixty days to October one. To allow councilors and members of the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, also known as J PACT. Adequate time to discuss and understand the changes. J PACT includes elected officials from across the Portland Metro Region and together with Metro creates and approves the region's regional transportation plan. Along with other federally required functions. Our region is currently in the process of reevaluating pricing policy for the twenty twenty three Regional Transportation Plan Update. It's essential that we're in coordination. J PAC and Metro Councilors will hear first will first hear a short presentation from O dot staff on this amendment on July twenty eighth at the upcoming joint. Uh, Regional Transportation Plan Workshop. Both bodies will not have time to meaningfully discuss these policies until mid September. In fact, the J PAC meeting is scheduled for September fifteenth, the date of your currently proposed extension. So even at this point, that one day will be the day that we have discussion and you're also going to expect our comments to be due that same day. The full sixty day extension of the public comment period will ensure that engagement process behind this amendment includes informed feedback from all of our regions' decision makers. As we've already heard today, there's so much. We need more time for Metro O dot and local partners to understand and work through differences. Additional time for review will also help ensure that both the regional transportation plan and O H P policies address the region's shared goals and priorities. Thank you for your consideration. And I've still uh, included my ask for the public comment period to extend into October. Um, mostly because I don't know if it will be feasible for us to get you a full summary of what's discussed the morning of the fifteenth. By close of business, September fifteenth, so even just a few more days after your current proposal. In order to accommodate the comments from the regional leaders here where it's not theoretical, where it is happening. Where we do need to make sure that we have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christine. Thanks for bringing the metro perspective. Next up, we have Lafoya Michelle, followed by Commissioner Smith.
Hi, Michelle. Go ahead.
Audio trouble.
It looks like you've unmuted yourself, Michelle. If you're there, go ahead.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Um, so I am just calling in because I'm an Oregon city resident and a homeowner in rural Oregon city. And I work full time in West Lynn, Oregon, basically directly across the bridge. The two oh five bridge. Um, and so I go into work in the morning. I usually try to come home for my lunch period and then go back home after work. So we're talking four times a day of tolling. Um, I'm concerned about that there is really no other alternatives to crossing the two oh five bridge such as. The the only other options are either to go to Sellwood or cross the Seventh Street Bridge, which I am imagining is going to be a nightmare. So I'm also concerned about the effects that the additional traffic will have on Oregon City and West Lynn. In regards to traffic and tourism. Um, I and I just wanted to let you know that where where I live in Oregon City, there's no public transportation. Trimate does not service my area. Uh, so I really don't have another option besides traveling by car to my place of employment. Um, so I really think that it's something that needs to be taken in consideration before the. The toll bridges are a done deal to take comments from the public. I don't think. It feels like anyone's listening to us in these small Clackamas County communities. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much, Michelle. We appreciate your comments. Next, we have Clackamas County Board Commissioner, Tudy Smith.
And Scott, I believe, I believe Tudy was here and I believe they're no longer on the call.
Okay. I'll I'll give the next three names and we can always bring folks that have missed an opportunity background. To give comment. So Shoshana Cohen. Tamara Coffey and City of Wilsonville Counselor Joanne Linville are next. Shoshana? Shoshana?
Uh, yeah. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good afternoon. I'm Shoshana Cohen and I'm here on behalf of the Portland Bureau of Transportation and our Commissioner in Charge, Commissioner Hardesty. First, we want to thank you for the work to amend policies related to tolling and congestion pricing in the Oregon Highway Plan. These updated policies have the potential to have very large impacts, either positive or negative on our region or our state. And so we were originally going to ask for more time and it said, I want to thank you for the extension. We really do need additional time to more thoroughly review these proposed policies and. Um, importantly, to ensure regional coordination with the current discussions happening about. Through the R T P for the regional congestion pressing policies as well. So while we need this additional time for more thorough review, we do have some initial comments and some concerns. The city of the city of Portland recently engaged on the Rose, re-engaged on the Rose Quarter Project and recently endorsed the Modified Locally Preferred Alternative. For the Interstate Bridge Replacement Program. And our expectations around both of these projects are that there's an equitably designed. Variable rate tolling program that's also designed to advance climate goals and support a truly multimodal system. What we're seeing in the draft amendments so far don't meet our expectations for a truly equitably designed pricing system that will also advance climate goals. And this could really imperil our recent agreements. So some initial highlights from our concerns include the following. The O H B should be much more, O H P should be much more explicit about using congestion pricing for reducing vehicle miles traveled. For system wide demand management and for reducing greenhouse gases. And to achieve these goals, multimodal investments should really be considered part of the project for funding purposes and not sort of a secondary priority after major highway projects are all paid off. The draft doesn't really seem to recognize, at least in our initial review, the work that has been done by the Equity and Mobility Advisory Committee. Either in the Use of Revenue section or elsewhere throughout the document. Um, and the protections for low income users aren't nearly strong enough and should include exemptions. The policy also seems designed to divert shorter trips off of the state system, yet not acknowledge the impact this will have on the local system. Nor provide any means for managing these impacts and this won't advance climate goals and will run counter to safety, mobility and equity goals. Just shifting the problems from the state system to the local system. Finally, the definition of a corridor is also extremely limited. It's not aligned with existing regional corridor definitions and doesn't reflect what's already been seen in modeling related to shifting travel patterns resulting from tolling the Abernathy Bridge. So while the city of Portland continues to believe that a well-designed pricing system has the ability to help advance state and regional goals and we want to support such a system. Again, in initial reviews, what we're seeing from these draft policies is not getting us there yet. We appreciate your time and look forward to continuing to work together to get these right. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Shoshana. Thanks for sharing the city's perspectives. Do we have Tamara Coffey? Followed by Counselor Linville.
This is Joanne Linville. Shall I go? Shall I go ahead?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and to address. Our concerns at this public hearing. Good day. I am the City of Wilsonville City Counselor Joanne Linville. The City of Wilsonville has two primary concerns regarding the draft toll amendment for the Oregon Highway Plan. First, we have great concerns of as have been previously mentioned regarding unintended impacts to the Charbonneau District. That historically is dependent upon using I five to access the remainder of Wilsonville. There are no other local access routes. The thirty five roughly thirty five hundred residents of Charbonneau. Who are mostly older citizens on fixed incomes are located south of the Wilsonville Town Center. Charbonneau residents must cross the Willamette River and I five Boone Bridge to access critical services and amenities in the remainder of Wilsonville. O dot is studying the I five Boone Bridge as a toll gantry, implying that these residents would be unfairly burdened and told whenever. They do errands into town for shopping, visiting family and medical appointments. Prior historical O dot policy is allowed for the use of the interstate freeway to provide local community access. Both circumstances that Wilsonville and Charbonneau find ourselves in today. Proposed goal six point one two point B action does not address the situation of a community's dependence. Upon the interstate highway to provide local access where there is no alternative route. As in the case of the Charbonneau District of Wilsonville. The city proposes that O dot amend the draft O H P so that tolling and congestion pricing are waived for trips on the interstate. By residents living within approximately one mile of an interstate interchange. Of a community historically dependent on the interstate for local access. Secondly, as the city split in as a city split in half by I five, which is the primary north-south arterial. Wilsonville continues to depend on a functional I five and I two L five for a majority of Portland Metro Region trips. A concern expressed by our constituents focus on a maximum daily toll for which trips. That require multiple occasions to access the interstate system would be considered. Thus, the city proposes a new proposed goal action to explicitly accommodate this common occurrence in a fair and equitable manner. The city proposes that O dot develops a maximum daily tolling limit to accommodate a toll users multiple trips on the toll interstate highway. Thank you for your time in considering Wilsonville's comments.
Thanks very much, Counselor Linville. Appreciate your comment and perspective. We've got just a couple more groups to go. Um, thank you for your patience. If you've been missed, we'll come back around and. Give you another opportunity and move on to those who have not signed up to raise their hands. So now we're calling on Karen Rish, followed by Beth Stoggs Dill, Catherine Lees Yell, and Nathan Olson. Is Karen available?
Go ahead, Karen. I've given you the ability to unmute yourself.
Hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so somebody did touch on this earlier. I think it was Isaac. Uh, if roads, first of all, are not to raise revenue. We already pay taxes for them. They're not revenue generating devices. And if you want to raise revenue, you should go through the legislature. Pricing, it's not your job to shape social behavior through pricing. And as others have commented, it's going to hit the poor. It's going to have people who have to drive for a living and it'll also affect freight. And those costs will be passed on to all of us consumers, which will increase inflation. And that's pretty much what I have. I I along with everybody else, almost everyone who's spoken has opposed it for very good reason. We pay taxes for roads and I've already paid once. I don't want to pay twice. And I don't want something added that has no end. And what happens is these things get snuck onto a budget item and then for the rest of our lives, even if they have sunset clauses, they don't go away. So they need to figure out another way of covering their revenue and it needs to be done. The way it was originally intended through our legislature, whereas theoretically we have people that represent us. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate you sharing your comments today. Next, we have Beth Stoggs Dill. We have Catherine and Nathan on deck. Beth?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please. I have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Beth Stoggs Dill. Um, I just wanted to come on here and express my opposition to tolling. Similarly to other people who have spoken. Um, I have strong concerns about the the financial impact that this would have on drivers. Who would be forced to pay to take local trips as well as the increased traffic. Within surrounding neighborhoods. I don't feel like tolling would solve traffic issues. I think it would simply create negative impact to local residents. Um, and would certainly encourage O dot to look at ways that. You know, taking mass transit can be incentivized for local residents to use that when they are able to. So that we're not just punishing those that don't have another option. For for mass transit. And that's everything that I wanted to say. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks so much, Beth. Appreciate you taking time out of your day and I appreciate all of those who've come to comment. Uh, Catherine Lees Yell, I may not have the last name right, but you're up next. If you have a moment, we'll give you three minutes. Catherine?
And I don't see Catherine here yet, Scott, so maybe we can move on to the next round of speakers. And then I'll just take this moment to let them know that we've almost reached the end of our list. And I know that there's at least one person who was listed earlier, uh, who's now here. So. After we finish up the list, we'll go back to people that maybe hadn't shown up yet and then we'll. Go to other people that are in the room. I know there's a. At least one person who's had their hand raised for quite a while, so we see you and you'll be up soon.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Nick. So we have. Thank you. Appreciate that, Nick. So we have four more names signed up. Nathan Olson, followed by Chris Smith, John Peters, and James Herb. So if you all could raise your virtual hands, we'll get you three minutes to give comments on the policy proposal. Nathan? We'll move on to Chris Smith.
Go ahead, Chris.
Good afternoon. Chris Smith, appearing on behalf of the No More Freeways Campaign. I'd like to say first that using tolling to just further expand freeways is counterproductive to our country, state, and regions' climate goals. And I would echo the comments from other testifiers about the need for transit service as part of a balanced system. We need to be moving people from automobiles to transit in order to achieve our climate goals, and we don't need to just fund transit capital investments. We also need to fund operations. I know the policy amendment references the constitutional limit I use of toll revenues. I request that we look at mechanisms that would allow us to exchange toll revenue for unrestricted federal dollars, so that we could potentially apply that to transit operations as well as transit capital. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Chris. Next to speak to the policy amendments, John Peters. Is John available, followed by my last pre-registered James Herb? John? James Herb, are you available? We'll give you three minutes to provide comments, if you will. Okay, at this point, we want to catch up with anyone we may have missed. I understand David Farmer, who was early on the list, may be available to speak. David?
Yes, this is Dave.
Yes, we can hear you. You'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, I live in Willamette. I'm sixty-eight years old. I am against the tolling program. My chances of, other than driving in my area, are very, very poor. I'm old. I live on a hill. I cannot ride a bike. And I just flat cannot afford it. And if tolls happen, I think an important thing for safety would be to put a speed thing in there, and that can be easily done with time and distance. And so everybody that's going over the speed limit gets a warning for a small infraction, a fee, a couple bucks for a medium, and a standard legal speeding ticket for other speeds, like above fifteen miles an hour, and that should be done for every section all the time. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time. Thank you for your comments, David. So we've concluded the list of pre-registered folks that would like to comment on the policy amendment, and we're coming back to the list. I'm just going to pause. Nick, do you have others identified? I'm not seeing any, but if they are available, if they are pre-registered to comment, we'd like those hands in the air.
So at this time, Scott, I don't see any others that have pre-registered that are available to speak. But I know that there's a couple people in the room that are interested in speaking, so I guess at this point, we'll ask anybody who's left in the virtual room, if you have not made your comment yet, but would like to, please go ahead and raise that virtual hand. That's going to put you into a queue based on the order in which you've raised your hand. I know that the timer has also gone away. We're going to get that set up for everyone again, just momentarily. And Scott, I think we will start with Mary Baumgartner. I know Mary's had their hand raised for a while. So we'll start there, just a sec here while I get the timer pulled up again, and we'll go from there, okay?
Thank you. Mary, if you can wait just one minute. If it takes more than that time to get our timer up, we'll do a hand time and let you know when we have thirty seconds left. But here it is. Mary, should have you off me. Love to hear your comments.
Oh, just a, just a second, Scott. Let me.
Okay, next up.
Let me unmute Mary. Hold on. And you all can see the timer, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mary. Thanks for your patience. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Mary Baumgartner. I'm a Westland City Councilor, and I am representing my immediate neighborhood, which is the Willamette area, but also, of course, all of Westland and the regional community, including Oregon City, in our extreme concern about the diversion traffic impacts that will unfairly and detrimentally impact our communities. We happen to have a very parallel route, which is already failing due to diversion traffic from the congestion on I-205 and people avoiding it that will no doubt increase and cause, I believe, even more damage to our community because people will be avoiding the area. They avoid the area now and avoid our restaurants and businesses along Willamette Falls Drive during peak times of traffic, just because it's inaccessible. You can't get through to it because we only have this limited roadway. And when the tolling diversion happens, I strongly believe that especially there will be people in the Clackamas County area who will not, will refuse to pay to drive on a roadway because of the previous callers mentioning the fact that people feel they have already paid their taxes, and that this is an unfair taxation. And out of protest, they will avoid the area. So the businesses who have been struggling through COVID and recession and our current traffic problems caused by the I-205 diversion will now be further impacted. I would also echo the comments made by those previously speaking about equity and how people who can least afford to change their trip times and pay these tolls will be the ones impacted the most. And so to call it an equity measure is very disingenuous to me, I'm afraid. I'll just have to say, it's incumbent upon the the agencies involved to do extremely more outreach to citizens, because I speak to many people who don't know this tolling is coming, or they don't understand what the impacts might be to them. And I'm happy to participate in any of those to get the word out, that people need to understand, and people need to have a voice in their taxation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your concerns, Council Baumgartner. I believe we have two more hands in the air and maybe some to follow. Mark Pearlman, followed by Brett Sherman. Mark, are you available? If we can take Mark off mute, we would like to hear his comments.
Yes, my name is Mark Pearlman. I live in the, in Westland, in that Willamette neighborhood that we've been talking about. And I would have personal experience that when 205 gets jammed up, people already take the back way down Eck Road, Borland Road, Stafford Road, over through Willamette Falls Drive, and it becomes a standstill for a long stretch. And the Willamette neighborhood with the shops and restaurants is going to be seriously harmed. And there's basically just going to be no way for people to get home. And that's just, I mean, it's clearly foreseeable, and it's going to ruin our neighborhood, and that's unacceptable. I would also like to echo people who have said that this is an unfair tax. It's a flat tax. It's a regressive tax, and it's going to harm low-income people. Now, you know, we live in Oregon. Oregon's supposed to be a progressive state. We, we have income tax, which is progressive. If we want to have a fair tax as progressive, use income tax to pay for these kinds of projects. And, and you have to convince a lot of people, the legislature and the general population, to get something like that going. That's the way you do it. That's a democratic way. Having it just jammed down our throats by a state agency is not the way this is supposed to work. And one general comment I want to make, and this is related to equity, you know, I understand that in the rationale that, well, people who use the stretch of freeway should be the ones to pay for it. But that's not a rationale that's used statewide at all. There are lots and lots of roads throughout Oregon, like the entire two-thirds of eastern Oregon, that the majority of people in Oregon don't drive on. But we all pay for those roads using tax dollars. We all, we always have, and we're always going to. So why are we being singled out to people who use this road? Nobody in those areas is going to have to contribute to paying for our freeway. But people in the Willamette Valley have to contribute to all of the roads in rural Oregon that they never drive on. That's fundamentally unfair. If you want to tax all of the people in rural Oregon for every one of those roads, I mean, you know, I'm never going to drive in Hermiston County. Why am I paying for their road? So I don't believe in that reasoning. I think everybody should pay for the infrastructure of the state. And that's why everyone in Oregon should pay for the improvements to 205, and it should not be a, a flat tax just on users, because that's terribly unfair and it's going to be damaging to everyone. I'm firmly opposed to the tax. Thank you.
Mark, thank you for your comments. Do we have Brett Sherman available to speak?
Go ahead, Red. Very good. Thank you very much. Brett Sherman, City Councilor, City of Happy Valley. I am also a member of the Metro Policy Advisory Committee, Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, C-4 Metro Subcommittee, and I-205 Diversion Subcommittee. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today and share a few thoughts. Thanks for your consideration. First and foremost, let's think about broadening the definition of diversion and significant rerouting. As a newer community of over twenty-five thousand residents, the City of Happy Valley lacks the regional transportation infrastructure that was invested in more established parts of the metro area decades ago. With fewer large, larger, with few larger-capacity transportation facilities and limited transit options, our residents must travel on already congested roads and local streets. Happy Valley also has one of the lowest permanent tax rates in the metro region, which limits our ability to fund transportation connections or transition rural roads to urban multimodal standards. As our region prepares to discuss mitigations for short and long-term diversion from the I-205 toll project, we urge the OTC not to adopt an overly prescriptive definition of diversion or significant rerouting. Rather, the statewide policy should contemplate the context and comprehensive impacts of diversion, recognizing that traffic will behave differently in areas with fewer or no routes or modal alternatives. Second, please clarify how toll policy will advance goals at the project level. We appreciate the OTC's role in clarifying how tolling could advance our mutual priorities of equity, climate stewardship, and vibrant communities. Please consider additional language to strengthen how the statewide policy will translate to meaningful project-level outcomes. For example, how will a statewide policy build on a diversion policy to shift trips to active transportation? How will a statewide policy hold projects accountable to advance equitable and climate-friendly outcomes? Also, please incorporate language to support additional vulnerable communities. There's groundbreaking work already underway at the Equity and Mobility Advisory Committee and through the Low-Income Toll Report. In addition to the good work already occurring there, the statewide policy should remain flexible to consider impacts and exemptions for additional groups that may be disproportionately impacted by tolling. And then finally, we need to resolve outstanding questions about the I-205 toll project. While it is outside the immediate scope of the OHP toll policy amendment, there remain critical unanswered questions about the I-205 toll project. You've heard many of them today, particularly with regard to how transit will be funded to support modal shifts, near-term modeling impacts, and revenue feasibility. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you again for the time to speak to you today, and, and have a good day. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Counselor Sherman. And I again invite folks to raise their hand. We're getting some great comments here. We're coming up on an hour and a half into the hearing, and we've got more time. We will be happy to yield three minutes for the next commenter. Do we have one, Nick?
No raised hands at this moment.
Just to remind everyone, the public comment period is extended now through mid-September, September fifteenth. So this is not your last opportunity, but we certainly want to take the opportunity today to hear from you, if you've taken time out. Going to pause for one minute. Yes, please.
Scott, this is Eric. You, you be needed the punch. I was going to remind folks about that as well, but also this is not your only way to provide those comments. Again, this, like I mentioned at the kickoff, we do have a public comment forum. I think we put that into the chat or the Q and A box a few times, and we can make sure we get that posted again here for anybody. So if you, you know, you go back and you want to look at the, the draft policies and you think of something else you want to share, you can continue to provide those comments through that public comment forum. I know we've received a lot of comments so far, and we're expecting a whole lot more to come in. Those comments are, they carry just as much weight as your public testimony this way. They all count. We all collect, we collect all of those. We consider all of those comments, and they all get shared eventually with the Oregon Transportation Commission throughout the process. So again, don't, don't feel like this is your only chance to get your point of view and, and your issues shared with the Oregon Department of Transportation. So thanks. I just wanted to plug, put a plug there. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. A good reminder, many ways to comment, time to comment, equally weighted comments regardless of how those come in. I think we did just share the comment form link again. Checking the notes that I see around me. Do we have any attendees who would like to speak to the policy amendments on the Oregon Highway Plan regarding tolling? Anyone who might have registered and wasn't able to get here earlier? Eric, quick question. Do we want to go back to repeat comments? I think that we may have another a second time hand in the air where we've taken, we go on beyond the three minutes today, or how are you feeling about filling the rest of the time if someone comes back around or would like to address the OHP tolling amendment a second time today?
Yeah, I'm seeing a couple of hands pop up for, for additional comment. You know, and really, this was an opportunity to get your key issues shared publicly here with the Oregon Department of Transportation. We did have this open till, till four o'clock, and we did have a number of no-shows. I'm okay if we want to allow folks that have already talked, you know, if there's something else you want to make sure you get across. I would ask that you make sure you try to hit an issue maybe that hasn't been touched upon, you know, versus just repeating the information you may have shared or others have as well. But I'm okay providing a little bit more time here, just for that as well. But then we'll get to wrapping up. I see some questions in the Q and A box. We'll go into the next steps, roles, responsibilities, and when, when to expect things for the remainder of the process. But yeah, if we just have a few folks that have just one more thing they want to make sure that we hear about, I'm okay with that, Scott.
Great. So we'll have an opportunity for additional comments, open again to those, all those attending. If you have your hand in the air, we'll definitely keep these under three minutes, and I'm going to, I'm going to turn to Nick to call the next raised hand.
Yeah, so we'll go at the top of the list. David Farmer, I'm going to go ahead and give you permission to speak. You should see a notification on your side.
Okay, this is Dave Farmer again. One thing I want to bring up is considering the large amount of through traffic that are two freeways. Get I-5 and 205. the large amount of through traffic that are two freeways, get I-5 and 205. I think that it's real important that the tolls start at the same time. Because if I-205 starts first, I think a lot of people, especially through people, especially truckers, will divert to I-5 and the pollution and congestion and will be really bad on I-5, which is one of the things we're trying to avoid. So the two freeways, they should be told at the same time. That's all.
Thanks so much, David. And it looks like Karen has her, Karen R. is showing here as a hand raised. Karen?
Yeah, I wanted to add that, you know, in general government, no matter whether it's federal, state or local, is there, there, they have an idea that they never have enough money and they're always looking for ways to get more. And to me, this is an end run around the way our government is supposed to work. We're supposed to have representative government and things that impact us financially should be run through the government, the way it was set up to be. And I can't tell you how angry I feel every time I see one of those lighted electronic signs on the freeway that tells me traffic is slow as I sit in it, or you know, what speed I should be traveling in. I think that was the biggest colossal waste of our tax dollars. And I remember that every time I see one of those signs, that's how ODOT spent my money. And I don't want another boondoggle like that. I, I want everything to go through the legislature and for us to be represented. If you're going to try to raise money, that's the way it should be done. The, the signs, those signs are just consuming energy and it's unnecessary. You know, for, for a hundred years, we've had highways without them and everything was okay. That's, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. And just to clarify, is it Karen Rish? Karen R., we appreciate your comments. Looking for any other hands. It looks like Counselor Sherman. Do you like to speak?
I would. Thank you for giving me another bite at the apple. I must say this is the first public hearing I've ever had this opportunity. So I enjoy it and appreciate it. And I do want to thank all of you for the hard work. I know that this is a, a huge project, a huge undertaking. And, and you know, as someone that sits on many, many of these meetings and gets an opportunity to really get into the, into the weeds quite often on these topics. One of the things I think is, is really important that I did want to communicate is, you know, Metro is currently going through updating the regional transportation plan concurrent with ODOT and with the, you know, the OHP amendment as well. And so at this juncture, they are not in alignment in many of the topics. And I think that the, the example I brought up earlier of what constitutes diversion, what constitutes rerouting, those are very important to have in alignment. Metro currently defines diversion or a corridor as effectively any, any vehicle that gets off the highway due to the pricing is considered diversion. In, in the latest ODOT version that I've seen, I believe this is in your version as well, diversion only occurs within a one-mile corridor on arterials that run parallel to the highway. And there are only deemed vehicles that are going on through trips, not short trips of three miles or less. And I know that that's, that's a lot of detail for everyone to digest. The point being, it's a whole lot of reasons why we won't use funding to cover the impacts of the tolling we're looking to put in place. My point being, I just want to make absolutely sure that we take the, the amount of time and effort to make sure that these various programs are in alignment, that they make sense and that they'll have the desired outcomes. I mean, we're all trying to accomplish the same things. And it makes sense to, to do that in a, in a consistent and coordinated way. Again, thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. That's all.
Thank you again for your comments. I want to make sure and leave opportunities for others to raise a hand. Happy to give you a, a new three minutes or an additional three minutes if you'd like to address the policy amendments. It looks like. Yes, we do have one. Counselor Baumgartner, would you like to address the amendments once more?
Thank you. I appreciate that and I won't take three minutes. I did want to mention that as we previously covered, the specific corridor along that's very parallel, immediately parallel to I-205 that's consisted of Borland and Road and Willamette Falls Drive is a significantly transit deficient corridor. And to the comment that Shoshana Cohen made about aligning transit and mobility along with the pro project of tolling is the only thing that would make sense and make it equitable. So if it can't be done that way, tolling should not be implemented until there is multimodal mass transit alternatives for people to access. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor. Are there others who would like to speak? At this time, Roseanne, Eric, I do not have. If we wait just one moment here, we'll see if we have another hand in the air. Otherwise, I think we're moving toward next steps and conclusion.
Yeah, so I, I think we're ready to officially close the, the public hearing portion and then move to our wrap-up and next steps. So Roseanne?
Thank you, Eric.
We did have one hand pop up, it looks like, real quick.
Yes, we do. Robert Wickliffe, Wickliffe. You're going to help, help me with your last name, Robert, if we can take you off, hear your comments.
And Robert, I'm getting a notification that allowed to talk is not available because of your version of Zoom. So I, I have to promote you to panelists if you want to speak and then we can promote you back to the attendees list. So do me a favor, Robert. If you, if you want to make your comment, go ahead and raise your hand again. Okay, Robert's not, not raised his hand again, so Scott, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. I think we will welcome Robert back in if he gets the opportunity before we close, but let's move on. If we can, Roseanne, with next steps.
Sure. Okay, the only next step I have is to close the hearing recording. But we might want to add a little bit of information at the end here, just a reminder of how folks can still access the information that's available through our website and our comment form. But for the official record, seeing no more folks signed up for oral or come, other comments, this concludes the list of persons who signed up for the comments. And so now I will close the hearing. The time is 2:38 PM and I want to thank everyone for attending and making a comment on the record.
Yeah, and this is Eric. I just want to build upon that. Thank you, everybody. I'm not exactly sure what happened with the sign up form. I think there might've been a few folks that thought the sign up form for speaking was maybe the comment form. And that might've been why we had a few folks not show up. But for everybody that was patient and let us work through that process, I, I really do appreciate that. I do appreciate all the comments. So I want to talk now about what the next step will be. So we are extending the public comment period until September 15th, so an additional 45 days. So individuals, groups, organizations, whatever you're affiliated with, or, or all the above. Boy, Counselor Sherman, when you introduce yourself, that was a long list of groups you're affiliated with. So all those groups and stuff are still welcome to provide comments through the, the public comment form or again through sending letters in through the Oregon Highway Plan Manager inbox and email. We will accept all those. They become part of the public record. What we will have at the end, when we get this process done and go back to the Oregon Transportation Commission is we will have a record of all the public comments, both from this public hearing as well as every comment we have from the forums and the letters will be all recorded in, in one document. So we'll know who, who provided comments, where they came from. One person asked about will the locational information be there? Well, as best we can. But we don't always get, get that information. So what will happen now is again, we'll be continuing to work with various groups. We, we heard from, I think it was again Counselor Sherman talking about how the Portland metro area, the metro government is working on the regional transportation plan and consistency. There are still discrepancies. Through working that, the feedback, ODOT will make recommendations on any changes to the policy based upon the feedback and the comments that you received. Based upon everything I think we've heard so far and the discussions, I would anticipate the final version that goes to the Oregon Transportation Commission will look a little different than it is today. That's what this public process is all about, is to get that feedback, make some modifications and changes, make this as best we can, trying to balance all the different perspectives. Knowing that's probably not perfect to get everybody happy, but you know, trying to find where, where we can. And then bring that back to the Oregon Transportation Commission. The Oregon Transportation Commission has the final authority for statewide policy plans. They will take the official action to either adopt these changes to the Oregon Highway Plan or choose not to. Again, that is going to be their, their decision. There's many other players when it comes to tolling and pricing. Again, I think there was actually one of the comments in the Q and A box. Just reminder again, the Oregon Legislature plays a really important role in this, especially for the projects that ODOT is working on in the metro area right now. Those were directed by the Oregon Legislature. So that's really fulfilling those expectations. So we will be again, collecting those comments, working on, on proposed revisions, working on the, getting the, the document modified as, as best we can. The one thing I would just kind of comment, I, we've heard a lot of different things today. And again, I want to thank everybody for your time, your passion, your interest. You clearly have strong feelings and, and beliefs around tolling and pricing and we need to hear that. There are some things I think we heard today that are directly related to the policy. I think there are some things today that are more directed towards the actual detailed project level implementation, specifically maybe with the 205 project or even the, the I-5 corridor. Again, the policy work doesn't specify a lot of those details. Again, setting up the framework to help inform those conversations. But a lot of those things will still be worked at the project level. So there's a right balance, just to kind of put that out there for everyone about what goes into the policy versus what kind of gets worked in those details for, for the project level. So just again, trying to be transparent as best we can about how far I think the policy can go. That's always a hard, hard line for us to kind of work through. So those are really our next steps. Roseanne, I would just ask you, did I miss any key things we wanted to hit in the wrap-up before we officially close out the, the webinar?
There's nothing for me. I can't think of anything.
I just want to make an opportunity for our policy and planning, or excuse me, our policy and data analysis division administrator, Amanda Peets. I don't know if she is still on. Amanda, did you want to make any final, final comments?
I know, just to also thank everyone for taking the time to share your comments and feedback with us. As Eric did mention, that will result in real changes. And I think the first demonstration of that was hearing that more time would be beneficial. And so that's why we extended the public comment period 45 days. We did look at extending 60 days, but based on other timelines, this is the furthest that we could do it. But we did want to maximize that and hear those concerns. And so your feedback does result in real changes. We are going to go back and pick all those and make some edits and modifications to the policy. As Eric said, trying to balance a lot of these perspectives that are shared. So again, thank you for your time and participation. It does make a difference.
Thank you, Amanda. And so with that, we are going to officially close out the, the, the public hearing and, and Zoom, Zoom call for today. Again, thank you so much for your time. Thank you for hanging out with us. It seemed like the technology, again, for the most part, worked pretty well, except for maybe some confusion on what that signup sheet was. I think that really had a lot to do with some of the folks who did not participate today. But for those who did and stuck with us, again, thank you very, very much. I really appreciate it. And thank you to our consultant team and others for all the great work behind the scenes, Scott, for facilitating. And with that, I think we'll go ahead and close out. So thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great day.